I'd like to be able to indication. Commissioner. Harrelson, followed by the buzzer of allegiance there by City Manager Watson.
Lord, thank you for your loving kindness, and thank you for your tender mercy, but let's meet in everyone that's here on tonight in a special way, lest our meeting on tonight be rest in your name, demand.
Amen. I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America, and to the equality for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty being contested throughout all. Amen. I'd like to ask all persons in the chamber to power off or put your electronic devices on vibrate to any disturbance, distraction during the city council meeting. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Adams.
Present.
Commissioner Harrelson. Commissioner Henderson, here. Commissioner Henry. Not present. Commissioner Isom.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Mayor Coates and Seeks. Commissioner Singleton.
Present.
Mayor Mahoney.
Present. The motion for the approval of the regular minutes of May twenty, motion made by Commissioner Adams, and it is supported by Commissioner Henderson.
Commissioner Harrelson.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Isom.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Outstanding.
Commissioner Adams.
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Mahoney.
Standing. For the purpose, I was not present. The motion for the approval of accounts payable listing.
Before.
Motion made by Commissioner Adams and supported by Commissioner Harrelson, discussion.
Oh, yes.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Adams.
Age one of four, twenty-nine, thirty-four, twenty-five, to Abin Marsh Consultants for armory renovations. Did we not just approve renovations to Pearson Construction? And while we're on the armory, Abin Marsh neglected to totally secure the armory payments that they received already.
Chair recognizes City Manager.
Commissioner, Abin Marsh does not do work, they do engineering services, so if there was work to be done, it would have been contracted by, to and up to a contractor. What you see is consulting services, not actual work that was done to do construction, anything of that nature, that is not what the engineer does.
But it says renovations, armory renovations, so we wouldn't know that if we didn't ask, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
One of four, Bear County Treasury, none of resident passes, we pay the county monies we've collected?
No, those are for the printing of passes that we have printed annually for, that are sold out of the beach.
And it goes to the county? It says Bear County Treasurer.
It's, the treasurer gets the payment, but there's a printing company that the county has that gives us a better deal than printing services, for printing services.
Okay. Two of four, Pearson Construction, Farmers Market.
That is construction, that is construction work.
Hey, we just approved, what, nearly three hundred thousand at our last meeting?
And Pearson is for, there is, that was the final payment, which includes retainage, so there is money that is held back on each job for the purposes of, if there's anything that goes back, so this is the payment, last payment plus the retainage that was held back for them.
Same page, down further, Abin Marsh Consultants, private drinking water grant.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Seventy-four.
That's work that is done for the private drinking water grant, so the services that were rendered by Abin Marsh are paid for by a grant that the city accepted and received from the state of Michigan.
Okay. Two of, three of four, B and Z, seventy-one, twenty-five. Air Hunk, at Water Street.
You said three of four, I'm sorry.
Three of four, yes. Seventy-eighty-eight.
Water Street, the Water Street lift station is probably the most important lift station we have in our system, and that one during the times that we had a lot of water and rain, we have ionized infiltration and intrusion, that causes that pump station to go, causes it to pump a lot, this was an emergency repair for that purpose because of the fact that we would then have, if that one did not pump, we would have backups all downtown and into Riverview area.
I mean, for a price like this, so that replaces it to where it can pump out more, I mean.
There was repair work that needed to be done on the actual station itself, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and down further, Meeks Construction Services.
That's a grant, that's a day grant.
Okay, I assume that those were done, finished, that we were out of funds for that?
No, these, the grant cannot take anymore, we have allocated all the dollars for the grant, they're still doing the work, so this is the pay for the work that they've done.
So they're still ongoing?
There's work that's to be done, but there is no new work that is going to be taken on because of all the work that we have allocated out, uses up the grant.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes General Lady Third Ward.
Um, did I get an understanding that our engineering firm don't have any responsibilities for making sure our projects are correct and complete? Did I understand that correctly?
No, ma'am.
Oh, they just don't do construction work, is that what you mean?
They're the engineering firm, they don't do the construction.
So, so Abin Marsh is responsible and have authority on making sure that our projects are done correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, with the question that the General Lady of Third Ward just asked, we're constantly paying Abin Marsh, and if they are the overseers of the work that's to be done, I mean, just forgive me if I feel passionate about the armory, and have been ever since I came down here, that during the time that they were supposed to rent through some ceiling, securing the building, there's a window in the front that had some of it still left, and since Pearson has gone down and secured the lower part of the building, that whole window, I'm just wondering who's in there stealing and throwing stuff out during the night when everybody is asleep, they didn't bother to secure it, but they've been paid?
Commissioner Adams, again, Abin Marsh did work, and there's a multi-phased project for the armory, windows have been ordered, the windows will be in, and then they'll be replaced, so that's what's going on, there is a, it's actually a five-part, a five-part phased project that we have in the CBG program, so like I said, we've completed the first phase and we're starting to do the rest of the phases, but like I said, it's not going to be all done at one time, unless we can get the monies to take care of it and pay for it all at one time, it will have to be done in phases then, as a phased-in project.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
No.
Commissioner Henry?
No.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Yes. This brings us to public participation, citizens' comments. If you would like to participate, please register with the city clerk, and she will call you accordingly.
Mr. Michael Hoy.
Good evening, I'm here on behalf of the Benton Harbor Historical Preservation Society, and also on behalf of what's going on at the Crystal Springs Cemetery. It was brought to my attention today by a posting by a lovely lady about what she found to be disturbing over the weekend, on Sunday, there was a posting of tombstones that go back to nineteen oh two, some of them from two thousand sixteen, a bunch with a pile of junk that was found over at Crystal Springs Cemetery, I brought this to the attention of the city manager, also our public safety director, and those pictures are posted at Bearing County Strong, which gets over ten thousand hits weekly, they're also posted at the Benton Harbor St. Joe Memories page, they're also on the Friends of the Mayor's page, this is very disturbing to me, here goes more of the story, WSBT was out there today along with ABC fifty-seven news, I spent most of my day out there, this pile that was there last night is now gone, it has disappeared, we got Mr. Burt on the phone, now you remember, I was here back, I think, October, November, when the water was coming in the building, you know how they fix that, they put up a piece of fabric and tapestry, okay, I was there four weeks ago, the same water's still coming in, I brought this to your attention, so now, these are memorial people, these are people's families, these are people's relatives, this is also sacred ground, the reason I say that is because Sorter Corners, which is Crystal, Pipestone, and Napier's, where Mr. Sorter actually helped the Underground Railroad, we know this, this is when the Potawatomi's had one of the biggest battles at Crystal and Napier with the Colonials, which was the British and the French, this is where the House of David used to come and do their decorations throughout the summer, and people would go out there and have picnics, this is sacred ground, so, they got Mr. Burt on the phone, he says that, oh, they got moved, first of all, he said many different stories, it's all on ABC fifty-seven news tonight, it's on SBT, WSBT, so now he says that, this is, and now there's a pile of garbage out there that was bigger than the city's pile, okay, of trash, garbage, it's unbelievable, in the back, there's five, sorry, I almost said that word, I mean, regroup, so they told us where these things were, right, so we went over to Crystal Spring Mausoleum, we opened up the door, even those caskets are gone, it was empty, what took place here, what has gone on here, we need answers, this is disturbing, this is going on at Crystal Springs Cemetery, someone needs to get to the bottom of this, I rest my case.
Mr. Allen, raise water.
Good afternoon, I got a concern, I put in for a contract for home service care, and I know they got, I'm doing the bank ones, and I know some of the yellow tickets been up, and you'll be up for like seventy, seventy-two hours or so, and the grass getting this tall on Long Street, you go right, right this hill right here, grass almost six foot tall, and every time I go down there, I can't never get no answer, they all tell me to come back, come back, this would be the middle of June, when they gonna give me, let me go to the cutting, because the taller grass get, the more, what's this on my board, the better the city look, and everybody telling me nothing, they all they gotta do, come back, I wanna know if they gonna honor contract, if they wanna honor the contract, or let me go, something, I need to know what's going on, ain't nobody give me no kind of answer, I go act, act for people, day in and day out, all they say, I'm coming down, down there too much, too much, calling problems, all I wanna do, like I said, I'm new to the game, I don't know how the game is playing, do y'all want, do y'all want my service or not? Cause I had a couple of beat, it's all dissolved by the contract, we had a habit, and if you wanna dissolve it, or you wanna go to work, I didn't even know. All you gotta do, go up to here right here, you see how tall the grass is, you ain't gotta go no further than that here, the grass here almost four foot tall, it ain't no grass it been out, that's all I got to say.
Mr. Anthony Cowley.
Thank you for allowing opportunity to reach so many important people in one moment, I'm bringing to your attention a very dangerous technology that is being told as safe, so I'm sorry for ruining everybody's night, citing the precautionary principles, human activities leading to morally unacceptable harm in the Nuremberg Code, where provisions on human experimentation based on priori reasons stand, it is known all living cells are controlled electronically, therefore it stands with general reason that if all living things are paved with and inundated with sub-millim and millimeter electromagnetic waves twenty-four seven, some cellular processes would be disrupted, and some harm would reasonably result, a rollout of fifth generation new radio electromagnetic frequency technology publicly and commercially has been called criminal, the commercial use as viewed by the American Cancer Society is equatable to the public's ignorance of smoking, asbestos, formaldehyde, formaldehyde, ethylate, BPA, and the cover-up of their harm, but worse in scope and scale, wireless fifth generation new radio millimeter wave irradiate by proximity, quietly and unknowingly, millimeter wave radio frequency radiation is not like the smoke of a cigar that you can see in sidestep, within the wireless five G fog, its millimeter waves stick with pulling themselves into all biological organisms, enveloping, damaging, and eventually killing indiscriminately any plant, any person, any animal, any insect, all things within five G wireless coverage, the twenty-four seven wireless use of high-frequency pulse millimeter waves anywhere will prove disastrous, I predict a future public health catastrophe directly related to millimeter wave radio frequency radiation, but it will only be disastrous for those within its short travel distance, not one study proves twenty-four seven, three sixty-five millimeter wave radio frequency radiation is harmless, in fact, it is very well-known millimeter wave radio frequency radiation causes harm, two, three, and four G are already proven effective, been dosing us every day with enough low-frequency electromagnetic radiation to cause cancer, we do not need this additional high-frequency millimeter wave and its powerful radio frequency radiation that our hair pulls into our skin, so I ask why do we need five G in Benton Harbor first, why doesn't St. Joe need five G, or how about South Haven, or maybe Stevensville, I've introduced paperwork for all consideration, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Ms. Emma Clark.
Good evening, everyone, I'm not here on the happiest note either today, this is our twelfth growing season that we have for the First Star Children's Garden, and when I started up with our First Star Children's Garden, I started over on Bear, and we were doing just fine there, but the emergency manager, Mr. Saunders, called me and told me he had heard things about me, and that he would love for me to come onboard as a consultant to the city, they had so many city lots, they would like for me to take up the challenge to start up gardens here in this area, and many of you know of when he was here, how that started out, so I did take him up on it, but what he did tell me, if I come in as a consultant, that he would like for me to take a city lot, so I took that one up on May Street, and I've been there this past, well, this is going on to the sixth year, and I think I have, anybody that has come in that area can be impressed as to that area, how it has improved, and how well it's been maintained, the garden, and I went on because he told me that as a consultant, mine would be a template for the other gardens, and I would be, you know, as able to sort of help upstart the other gardens, and there are other gardens that have started up, I have little three individual gardens myself that I maintain, so what he told me that the water I would never have to worry about in that place, as a consultant, I'm not being paid, so I give the vegetables away free, no one has considered that they ever paid for one vegetable, and many of, some of the people here has benefited from some of the vegetables in there, it's beautiful, but I was notified this past week that I have to sign my name on, which you know is a three hundred dollar connect fee up, and then I have to list my name on there and pay for the usage of the water, now, it's a nonprofit, it's a community garden, and Mr., the city manager told me that HUD says, and something references that I would have to pay for the water, I didn't know HUD had anything to do with our water, but I looked to our commissioners here to look into this situation, why is it that I started in with this garden here, and now I have to pay for this community garden's water, which is any and everyone pretty much here, they said, well, it's free water, but look at the fact that I keep that corner clean, they don't have to have it maintained, they don't have, they have anyone to come in, cut the land, it's up kept, that's a lot that they don't have to pay anyone to come in and clean up and maintain, so where am I getting any kind of benefits from working all day and late into the night, getting it up, bringing children in, and the residents in to enjoy nice, clean vegetables, free of any kind of chemicals, I want you all to address the mayor I know, and the city manager in reference to this, because I think it's very unfair, and it's not gonna go down very easy, thank you.
Mr. Jett Two Brown.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, it's honored to be here this evening, my name is Chief Two Brown, I'm from Chicago, Illinois, I serve the Journey for Justice Alliance as its national director, we are a grassroots human rights organization with membership organizations in thirty-five cities across the country, committed to equity and public education, I come from the first community in the United States hit by school privatization, which was actually where President Barack Obama was a state senator, where Arnie Duncan's mother runs a community, runs a after-school program in the historic Bronzeville community, which is ten minutes from downtown Chicago, right off the lake front, it's the same community that Sam Cooke grew up in, Richard Wright in Woodland Brooks, and Dr. Daniel Hill Williams, the first man to perform successful surgery on the human heart, built Pride at Hospital, but this is also a community, despite how proud it is, and despite the history that suffered from thirty to forty years of municipal disinvestment, and so the first expression of school privatization was a plan to close twenty out of the twenty-two schools in our neighborhood, and turn them into charter schools or contract schools, now, I'm the son of the mighty Kenwood Oakwood Community Organization, the Chicago's oldest black-led grassroots organizing group, what I ask to be distributed among you are two reports that we released as a Journey for Justice Alliance, one called Death by a Thousand Cuts, Racism, School Closing, and Public School Sabotage, our members are not paid by unions, our members are not paid by privatization interests, we are the mothers and fathers, the parents whose children have to go to two or three different schools after they close, we've just organized ourselves into organizations to have a national voice, the report, failing Brown Reborn, I mean, the report, Death by a Thousand Cuts chronicles for you the story and the impact of school closings in cities like Philadelphia, Detroit, Oakland, Chicago, Jackson, Mississippi, and just after all the soundbites, the fact that we know this school privatization harms children, you know, the Hippocratic open medicine says, first do no harm, but we are, we are being bombarded by policies that are harming black children, even, so I speak to you today not as in charter school, like someone who's like hell-bent against charter schools, but I am hell-bent against the charter school industry, and the impact of the charter school industry has been cataclysmic in our neighborhoods. Should I stop him, ma'am?
Proceed, listen, so what I'd like to say to you today is I've given you three pieces of documentation, I'm just asking you in your legion, one is the report I just mentioned, the second one was released in May of twenty eighteen called Failing Brown Reborn, and that report is important because we have to remember in nineteen fifty-four, the U.S. Supreme Court laid down a mandate, and the response to that mandate was not contrition in centuries of brutality, which was shouldn't be, it was actually a movement to stop and to not adhere to the mandate of Brown Reborn, Senator Donald Byrd out of Virginia called for massive resistance to Brown Reborn, and senators all over the country joined him in that fight, then our children, instead of receiving the equity that that mandate demanded, were hit with punitive policies like zero tolerance, so not only did we not honor the mandate of Brown Reborn, we then looked at black and brown children through a lens of hate, so I wanna ask you, because I have no political reason to be here, and as Malcolm X said, I am not, you know, a particular expert in any field, but I'm sincere, my sincerity is my credential, so I don't have an agenda, as I talk to you this evening, I'm simply a man in my neighborhood that has to look other young men in the face as their schools close, and I can't live with it, so in two thousand and fifteen, we fought one of the most powerful Democrats in the United States, Rahm Emanuel, when he tried to close our last Open Roman High School, and the parents that I organized with, including that woman right there, that hero, Irene Robinson, we waged a thirty-four day hunger strike, and we stopped the closure of our last Open Roman High School, and we guaranteed that school's open today with sixteen million dollars in new investments for black children, and we demand equity, not to scam on this school choice, so the third document you have is called School Choice is a Scam, the Times Sisters and Brothers is for courage, the governor of this state was on CNN, and she blasted Betsy DeVos's policies. Our members in this state, Black Transgender Quality Education, as well as the Detroit Life Coalition, called me, and we said, so they had hope that possibly this governor would actually look at the crimes that have been committed against Michigan's children, and push for equity, and as soon as the smoke clears, she flips, and is now trying to close Benton Harvest Only High School, I say to you, as somebody who has got the battle scars, I have numbers in Camden, New Jersey, Newark, New Jersey, all over this country, I've seen parents, I have members in Puerto Rico.
I've seen parents, I have members in Puerto Rico, where parents have had to occupy schools for 165 days to stop them from closing. There is a baseless hatred of us that has never been reconciled. There's been no accountability for it. And there should be a, there should be a line. And that line has to be our children. The children of Benton Harbor deserve not a scam called School Choice, not the charter school industry, where we know only one out of five charters outperform traditional public schools. Despite the fact they can pick the children they want and kick out the ones they don't, only one out of five, that should be unacceptable to every man and woman in this room. With the Detroit Lions except the quarterback that only competed, one out of five of their passes. So why is that okay for our children? So I say to you that there is a model that works. It's called Sustainable Community School. It is happening in districts all over the country. In Newark, New Jersey, in New York City, where the parents in New York made de Blasio commit to no more school closings. And guess what? Their college career, their college career and readiness rate has skyrocketed. In Cincinnati, Ohio, they don't have to use scams. They went from 50% of the children graduating to 87% of the children graduating. The greatest organizer of our time, Ella Baker, said, "Any man or woman, regardless of their level of education, has the ability to analyze the conditions that they face and move to change them." So we cannot let class stop us from looking at Sisters and Brothers and saying, "We will fix our schools." We planned, we developed a plan for diet. Mothers, fathers, teachers, youth. And the American Education Research Association said our plan was the best academic plan they'd ever seen. Because we actually did something that no one else does. We looked at black men and women and we said, "What do you think?" And we meant it. We asked them, "How do you feel you should improve your schools?" And we listened to them like they had PhDs. Because they do, because you know what we survive, you know what we go through. So I will close, but I'm just sharing with you, Sisters and Brothers, with all sincerity in my heart, don't subject our children to this. Don't subject our children to this. This is a moment for courage. And that governor is only as powerful as we let him be. All right? Thank you, Father. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Tough act to follow. The other half of education is employment. And we would like to bring jobs to Benton Harbor in the form of a cannabis company. We have a building at 200 Paw Paw. That's, my understanding has been through committee and we're ready to pay cash for it. And we would like to bring jobs and industry that comes with it. So let me tell you a little about myself. I'm from Chicago. I started a civil rights law firm. We are devoted to civil justice. We combat the evils of wrongful convictions. We freed dozens of men from prison who got convicted for things they didn't commit. We combat discrimination and basically trying to empower communities that otherwise wouldn't have a voice. By our law firm, we have about 50 lawyers now and we are out there fighting social just causes, including education. So I started a cannabis company. And it's a little bit different than some of the other cannabis companies because of our roots in social justice. We're very committed to being partners with the communities that we go into. We form strong partnerships. We are a very diverse company, very committed to diversity, both having a lot of women that run things and racial diversity. And we give back to the communities we're in because we really do see it as a partnership. So we are business, as all cannabis companies are. But being formed by civil rights lawyers, we are, in fact, very committed to community. The company has grown. We're in Illinois now, we're in New Jersey, Massachusetts, California, and Pennsylvania. So it has become something of a serious company. And we're very excited about Michigan and we're very excited about Benton Harbor. I will tell you that not every community in Michigan has opened their arms to this industry. People are afraid, they're not as open-minded as this one. They're turning their back on jobs and industry. Cannabis is going to be big. You know, I don't know of people's personal view. You don't have to smoke it, eat it. I don't. But some people like to. And it's done wonderful things on the medical side. Glaucoma, seizures, it has tremendous properties. But the point is, it's here and it isn't going anywhere. And why should the neighboring town get the money? It should stay here. And a lot of towns are turning their backs on it, some towns are being open-minded. Your town, I understand, has already decided that you're gonna be open to it. And I'm here to try to make you comfortable that we're the people you should do it with. And we would like to not just open a retail business, but we want to be all-in on Benton Harbor and make this our home, where we would do, there's multiple aspects of cannabis. We are a big company, so we want to do the retail, the dispensary, and make a nice, respectful business that people can be proud of. But we also want to put the jobs here. We want to grow it here and we want to process it here. And that's somewhat labor-intensive, they're well-paying jobs. Our company, not surprisingly, is committed to living wage benefits, health benefits. These are good jobs. And some companies are gonna come here and say, "We just want to put our dispensary here. We want to put it all here." We want Benton Harbor to be our headquarters. And we have partnered with a local person, Dee Hicks, who is fantastic and wonderful and from everything I can tell, very much embedded in this community. And she is going to be in charge for us. She is going to run it and staff it and hire. So we are not gonna hire, I am not from here, but I'm here to be part of this. And she's going to hire people who are from here. And she's going to make sure that we are very, very connected. Because there's a lot of out-of-town companies that want to come here and make you promises. We want to be part of it. So just to conclude, we want to be partners in this community. I had the pleasure of having a meal with G Two before the meeting here. We're committed to things like education too. We are a law firm. A partnership can look all kinds of things. If you guys need legal help, you know, not to take over, but help, we would view this as a partnership, where we would be part of the community and we are just as bothered by the injustice G Two described as many of you probably. So I hope we could be your partners.
Mr. Rajin.
Well, the evening is far spent, so I'll be real quick. Somebody said, I know that's a lie, because I ain't. But I should be real quick. Blessings on y'all, commission. All of my wonderful fellow citizens of Benton Harbor, especially my elders. I bless you and I thank you. I creep behind folk like Ms. Emma, who's tireless. It's almost embarrassing to sit here. She's so tireless in her work. Every time I look around, she's working, she's working on her hands and on her minds and on her spirit. And I honor her. And so I'm honored and privileged. The brother from Chicago, both gentlemen from Chicago, brought some wonderful ideas. We got a critical meeting coming up. I'm almost done. A critical meeting coming up tomorrow, of course. I want to remind everybody about a very, 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 very critical meeting tomorrow at Benton Harbor High School and the PAC at 6 o'clock. People from all over the state and people from around the country will be there tomorrow. It's 11:59, y'all, you know. It's the 11th and a half hour. It's a critical time. But one of my mentors said, "It's a critical time, but it's an exciting time." I believe that. Of course, I'm not capable of being in Rob's, as Rob Posner's shoes, who was international. But it's a critical time here in Benton Harbor. But it's an exciting time, at the same time. So if we can see it like that, if I can be spiritual, put some spiritual element in there, if we can see the time and not get discouraged and not get, I ain't come up with a bunch of hoopla. I'm 52 years old. I don't have to, I don't live to impress nobody, ever. I'm at a junction in my life where all I want to do is be of my progress for me and my family and those around me. That's it. Anyway, my last, my last comment. You know, Dr. Richard Williams said, "They stole it, but we must return it." I come with it. I'm popping the message too. A lot of people don't want to hear, but the fact of the matter is, Brother Mahala, he brought it out the other night. We got $19 million outside of this community through the school of choice, through parents who took their kids out of our district. $19 million. So we know the racial elements, what we're dealing with. But I always look at the person in the mirror first. Fact of the matter is, we got a whole lot of money that's outside of this district. And that's on us. That's on us. I love and, if I will, can I have three seconds? I love and respect all the parents that are taking care of their kids. I know 90% of them. And so it's not personal. It's not personal. I love and respect each and every one of them. And it's almost like, who am I to question you about what I do with my kids? At the same time, it's a fine line. It's the same education that we, the products that, who's gotten quality educations from this community, including us. The same education is available. And I found out that the same curriculum that is at Benton Harbor is throughout the state. So those same kids would do well at Benton Harbor. The same ones that do well in Bearin Springs in the same zone would do well at Benton Harbor. I would say that caliber student. Birds of a feather flock together. Those are the ones that we need to bring the district where it needs to go. You're the ones that we need to bring the district back where it needs to go. I know I get a little bit funny for that, but I was born for it. I was born to do it. But the balance, I'm here to balance the conversation that we need to look at ourselves in the mirror first. That's maybe how we're gonna deal with this situation. Not looking from outside, but looking from within inside. Blessings on y'all. I love y'all. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody who participated in the public participation. This brings us to our consent calendar items. Are there any items that should be separate? Chair recognizes Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, Uncle Mayor. Adopt a resolution to approve the support of Michigan's MBK Jan Summit.
Chair recognizes Mayor Proton.
I'd like to know why the sale of 200 Paw Paw's on the agenda made it with the committee and was pushed on by my committee, come to the full body.
Are there any other items that should be separate?
Adopt a resolution to approve the recommendations award bid of Haciel Bean. Adopt a resolution to approve the support of President McKeever's bottom foundation. And I do, out of respect for the people who come from Chicago, who came through committee, want to know why the purchase of 200 Paw Paw is not on the agenda. We're talking about standing up for the people. But they went through the process. And if it wasn't going to be on committee, it wasn't going to be on the agenda, it's only courtesy to tell people who are driving two or three hours that they're not going to be on the agenda.
City manager can address that in his comments.
Well, I would just put a resolution, I would put forth a motion that we tabled on the agenda. And we don't want nothing tonight, because we didn't put nothing on here tonight. You cannot pick and choose. So I put a resolution on the floor that we tabled this whole meeting and come back next week, whenever you want to come back, until we do what's just and what's right by the community. And that's a resolution on the floor. That's a motion, y'all. I'm sorry. Put a motion to the floor.
Is there any discussion? Chair recognizes Mayor Proton's seats.
With all due respect, and I've been a part of this board long enough to know the games that's been played, the thing that's happening, that this other stuff we got on here is pretty much, the Haciel Bean is going through whoever else. They didn't even give it to the lowest bidder. You know, we getting hoodwinked to bamboo by what we want to push for and what we don't want to push for. I'm not on this commission to be a puppet master. Nobody has a hand in my back. I'm not a biblehead, y'all, to just say yes to what you want me to say yes to. When we go through committee and we put stuff on the agenda or disband our committee, but don't play our committee like our committee does not exist. And we cannot push stuff forward to the agenda. And the recommendation of that committee was to push the item forward. So if it cannot be done, if somebody need to let us know ahead of time. I don't have no personal gain or agenda, but I don't have, it's disrespectful for my committee to come in and sit for three hours and push something forward and it's not on the committee, not on the agenda. I think it's an insult. I think as a body, just like anybody who come in with development now, we don't need to hear it, until we do what's right for the schools. So that's where Mayor Proton, call me commissioner next week if you want to. Seats is at? I'm not voting on nothing until we start doing what is right for the people. All the filibustering and the bull crap is over. I will sleep. I shouldn't have woke up coming to this room like this. I'm ready. So there is a motion on the floor. No, I'm telling you I'll sleep today.
His discussion.
There was a motion on the floor to table all this until we go ahead and do what we need to do. I appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Proton.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henry.
Oh, thank you. We did have a long discussion about this. And it did come out of committee. And I don't think it's fair for us to have to wait until city managers comment. I don't want to table everything that's on the agenda tonight. When you can explain to us right now what happened and I don't, I definitely don't want to place things on hold for tonight because he can answer that question right now and let us know what's going on. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henderson.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. With that particular bill, and I agree with Commissioner, um, seats as well because we brought things out of committee and they weren't placed on the agenda or even passed or even tabled for lots of reasons. Some of them supported and some of them he did not. So I agree with that. Well, my question is regarding that particular bill. Because of the federal status of that building, I thought that there was some restrictions on that particular building. And so if that was the case, then it could not be on this agenda. And if that was the case, then people should have been notified that that shouldn't have happened or in that particular committee, it should have been stated that Commissioner Seeks so stated that it could not be put on the agenda. But just some clarity around that.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at the agenda from that day and it was a discussion of the sale of 200 Paw Paw. We got in the committee and we talked about it. There was no...
Point of order, it was requested that the city manager explain. Please let him do that.
So when we got there, there was a group that came and had offered to buy 200 Paw Paw, which is correct. There was no purchase agreement, no other discussion relative to that other than that they were interested in it. So because it was just a discussion and there was an interest in it, then that's why it wasn't put together to be a resolution because... then that's why it wasn't put together to be a resolution because, again, if you're going to sell property in the city as an entity, you have to offer it and make it available for everyone. And, and so that was brought to the committee that night. But there was no RFP put out, there was nothing on selling the property current. The last thing that was done was done to sell it to Mosaic. And at that time, Mosaic did not, they were, it was, uh, it was advertised and put out. Mosaic then made an offer on it. We couldn't sell it to them at the time because there was an issue with the E D A, the federal government. And that had since, at the time we started that, and then Mosaic pulled their offer. Then we went to, they had, uh, they approved it and said it was released, relieved. We don't have any real estate agent that's, that's marketing the product, the property. Again, there was a discussion on selling the property, which, again, I have no problem with selling it. But there was nothing, there was nothing more than the discussion from my understanding. And there was someone who made an, uh, made a, a, a pitch to buy it.
Chair recognizes, uh, Commissioner Henderson.
So this was just my follow-up question, and I hear that, but also as a committee member, as a city manager, was there any, um, advice given to the commit, committee about those particular issues so that they could have made an informed and intelligent decision versus get here and get embarrassed by people who showed up versus having the information that they could not sell that building or there, all of these things were needed prior to the people coming and prior to us having this meeting? There should have been some advice given to the committee members before actually even getting into this meeting, which is a huge oversight and completely unacceptable.
Commissioner, Commissioner Henderson. This was put on at the last minute. There was no, there was no-
Was there advice given to-
There was no, there was no advice asked for. There was no advice asked for.
When order, can we have some order?
There still should have been some advice given to those commissioners in that particular meeting. If you know these things, because right now you talking from experience and just your knowledge about the building, that should have been stated to those commissioners that night.
Were you at the meeting, Commissioner Henderson?
No, that's why I'm asking this question.
I was.
So if you could please allow me to answer.
I, I, I'm asking.
Okay, are you finished?
I'm, I am finished.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you. If there was an offer, if there was, that was going to be sold, then it, then I would have done that. But again, it was a discussion of the sale of two hundred Paw Paw. Prior to the meeting, I did not have any conversations with anyone about the sale of two hundred Paw Paw. And when we got to the meeting, that's when it came out. The last time we had any conversation relative to two hundred Paw Paw, we were talking about letting the young lady use it. So I, I, again, like I said, if there was the intent to sell it, there was not, that was not conveyed, and I did not understand that. It was a discussion.
I wanna recognize the city attorney.
Oh, hold on, man. I didn't have my hand up. And you went back to Commissioner Henderson. And I had my hand up three times.
Mayor Proton, I recognize you.
Honorable Mayor, I started off with the-
Point of order, point of order.
Because it's a lie. He left the room and went to go get the price. He left the room and go get the price of the property.
Commissioner Seats, you out of order. Chair recognizes the city attorney. What is the process of selling property for the city of Ben Harbor?
It's always my recommendation for municipalities to have it listed.
It is listed. Take the sign down.
I wish we could respect-
Uh, because right now what you're doing is wrong.
I'm required. I was not at-
You was not at the meeting, so let me speak, because I'm the chairman of the meeting. The city manager's lying.
But you're not the chairman of this meeting.
He accepted the price.
Who accepted out of order?
You left the room and told us the different price of what it was after the move.
Chair recognizes the city attorney. What is the process for the city of Ben Harbor for selling property? The legal process?
It'd be one, my recommendation that it be listed so that all potential buyers are aware of the listing and that that would therefore normally generate the most options for the city to consider as to the purchase price as well as the use of the building. And then for that, then we'd come to a committee or city commissioner for a, a decision. Again, you cannot sell property normally without a listing agreement, without a, uh, a purchase agreement. And to my knowledge, I, well, not to my knowledge, I haven't seen one for this particular property.
Should the purchase agreement come to committee?
That would be my recommendation, Honorable, for a purchase agreement to come to committee for a full review to the reasons I cited, for the purchase price and the options for the use of the building and whoever else is of interest in the city.
Are there any unprecedented situations that you know professionally where municipalities sell property without a purchase agreement going through committee or not listed, um, for all potential buyers?
Well, not all municipalities that I represent have committees, but all of the municipalities that I represent do market property to ensure that they're getting the most value for any, um, property, excess property that the city has. So in answer to your question, I don't know about the, it's good practice to have a purchase agreement. And for that then to be submitted somehow for consideration by either a committee or by the city commissioner.
Chair recognizes Mayor Proton.
Honorable Mayor, I do apologize for my behavior earlier, but I hate to be lied to to my face. Um, and I, and I'm, I'm saying it's just blatantly as a lie. I called the city manager to ask him, because I was contacted about this building. I asked him the price. He called the Department of Public Works director to let us in the building twice. When we were sitting in the meeting, city manager Watson left and said he was going to see the last listed price of the building. I got commissioners who were there. And we said, they said, well, we're willing to purchase the building cash at that price. Push it forward. We had commissioners who were there. We waited it for hours. And to say that nothing was said is totally disrespectful. And I, 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 I'm, I, I hate to explode like that, but that's, that's not true. It's not, I got, I hope these other commissioners have enough.
I'm just asking a question.
To say it's not true. We pushed, we pushed it forward. When they asked the question, they came and did a, they said, do we need to build purchase buy agreement? They said, well, how much they want to pay for it cash? And we all shook our head yes, and we said, well, we'll push it forward to the general body. And that's what, that was the last, that's what we left at. He left and said how much it was on the market for it, left the room for twenty minutes.
Is there, was there, was it a purchase agreement to be put before the-
Honorable Mayor, with all due respect, we have sat here and voted on stuff we've never seen before. We've given millions of dollars to Island Marsh and never seen nothing before. We make people jump through, these people came and told us exactly what they were about. They're about justice and growth to help not only to disenfranchise, but to help people been lawfully prosecuted get out of prison and jail. Well, we all, we all heard this. And we all heard a price.
But where's the purchase agreement? Because as the mayor of the city, when it takes six votes to sell land, then two, there should be a purchase agreement before the city suits.
Honorable Mayor-
Before we vote. Are you, you a real estate man?
Can I, can I finish?
Own property?
But you giving me the floor, and I just took it, Honorable Mayor.
I relinquish.
My statement to you is, Honorable Mayor, what part does our, what part does these employees pay, play? Do they do what they wanna do, or they do what they're told to do? If there was supposed to be a purchase agreement, should not it be suggested by the city manager that after we agreed to what we gonna sell the property for, that he come forth and say, well, let's talk to the attorney? Let's talk to the city assessor? Let's talk to somebody? I don't wanna act like this was a ghost meeting though. Because everybody was in the meeting. So if we wanna keep moving forward like we placating us with a pile of tricks as we say, then this is a big pile of tricks. Because people are doing whatever they wanna do and they get paid for whatever they wanna do.
Chair recognizes city clerk.
I wasn't at the committee meeting, but I, um, just had a question. If it was considered that that location is our home location? Do we consider that during this discussion? I'm just asking, that's something to-
The, the building is caving in, it's moldy, the roof is caving in. There's no, there's no heat. How much are we, how much are we paying right now to keep it? The windows are busted out. What, what, this all suddenly becomes a, a, a historical monument?
Mayor Proton, um, I don't, I don't have a problem with it being put to good use. Uh, but I do think that it should be done properly. And I think that it's only right that a purchase agreement be put forth first. Because I don't know, you know, what, we just voting on a, a gentleman's handshake or because it was discussed, I think it should have gone to the city attorney for him to look at. I wish I could, I mean, we just disrespect as if this is just a, a argument session. This is a, a public government meeting. But the city attorney should review the purchase agreement first to make sure that the city is protected. It's, it's no different from a lease. It's no different from, um, an outright purchase, a land contract. We're talking about real estate. And as I said, I, I would like to see the building be put into good use. Go back on the city tax roll. However, if I'm a, if I'm going to sign it as the mayor, then it has to be done properly. And I don't think to push it forward as it's been said tonight without the proper legal advice, the proper, um, protocols, I think it's an injustice to the residents. Because that's not our property personally. That's the citizens of Ben Harbor's property. And if we're gonna sell the citizens of Ben Harbor's property, then we gotta do it the right way. So and it's not even, hey, it's not even on the agenda anyhow. So we taking up a lot of time discussing an item that's not even on the agenda. So what's before this committee or this council at this time is, are we going to scrap or table all of the other items? Because this particular item is not on the agenda today. Chair recognizes Commissioner Singleton.
Thank you. Main point of it is, uh, it's a principle thing. And we look at, but yeah, Commissioner Henderson always say, you know, trust the process. And one of the processes was to go through committee. Went through committee, and if it was suggested, I went there. But went through the committee and it was, if it was asked to be forwarded on, that's our process work. But if there was a problem with that, then it should have been, as Commissioner Henderson said, it should have been brought before, the commission, way before we got here. So if there's a problem with the process, you know, that, that, it just don't, well, don't look, don't look good when you say go through committee, go through committee, and you thinking everything okay, and then you get here on Monday night and that didn't happen.
Well, maybe, uh, Commissioner Singleton, if a purchase agreement was presented to the committee.
That, that, that should have, should have been, it seemed like staff would have said, hey, that's what we need to do, let's get that and everything be in order to present to the, uh, full commission. That didn't happen, so there was a breakdown somewhere.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't wanna debate about a break.
Okay, but I have the same.
I would like to recognize Commissioner Adams.
Thank you.
Respectfully.
I happened to be at the meeting in question and was very deep in on the conversation, and I kept having this one question. We always talk about the citizens, the citizens, the citizens that we represent. The citizens pay for legal. And they're supposed to be at these meetings. And there were some legal questions that came about and nobody was there to answer them.
I don't know that there was a request for legal counsel to be present at a committee meeting. But what's before this council at this time-
In Alabama, Ben Harbor.
Are you finished, Commissioner Adams? Thank you. So what's before this, uh, council is, are we, is there, is there, after discussion of, of, tabling everything on the agenda, is that the will of the council? Is that supported?
Table the consent calendar.
Madam Clerk?
To table the consent calendar. That's the motion that's on the floor.
I, I, I'm willing to-
Chair recognizes Mayor Proton's seats.
I'm, I'm willing to withdraw that motion. But we should also know that this is not right, Honorable Mayor. I, 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 they're, they look like it's purchase, but I'm not, look like it's some-
Is it possible that this is the contract?
It's not. It ain't time. They got, they got- We, we can call a special meeting, but I, I would not be disrespected like this ever again to say that, that something we put forth and to say that we never said nothing about purchase or sale when it says right there on the agenda, the discussion of the sale of two hundred Paw Paw and to agree with the price. I wanna tell these people who come from Chicago that we do apologize for the city of Ben Harbor for our dysfunctional behavior. And I appreciate them coming. Thank you. Because now what's gonna happen is just pay attention to the process, and I appreciate you. I would, I would draw the motion. But it's gonna be something like-
Is it supported? Okay. Mr. Manager.
First item for consideration is support for the Michigan MBK G N summit. Recommendation that Mayor Mohammed and the Ben Harbor City Commission reaffirm their support for the My Brothers Keeper Community Initiative and supports the Michigan MBK G N summit to be held November one, two thousand nineteen in Ben Harbor, Michigan.
Is there a motion for the approval, the motion made by Commissioner Adams? Supported by Commissioner Singleton, discussion. Chair recognizes Commissioner Adams.
Thank you. According to what the city manager just read, what's is not for the letters of support, one was for the governor and one was for Mr. Michael Smith of, um, Michael Smith of the Obama Foundation. And just for the record, MBK is My Brothers Keeper and G N is Girls Equity Network. Am I correct, your chair, city manager Watson?
Commissioner-
Did those letters go out?
Commissioner Adams, this was, this was to allow those letters to go out. Remember the discussion that we had about it, that you supported it? And then once that's done, then we'll go out. From that point would be the letters to ask them to come from the mayor, from the, from, because you wanted to, maybe you wanted a resolution of support for it.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, I, I just want clarity on that because city manager Watson stated that I really didn't need this resolution that the letters could go out. And even though if they've gone, because since then, we have a governor that stepping on our children's necks. And I don't think that I would like it to go if it hasn't already, because by now- And I don't think that I would like it to go if it hasn't already, because by now, we should have received a response. I, I guess we have though. I guess we have received a response. But if it has not been sent, then I'd like to pull that one. But I would like for the letter to Mr. Michael Smith to move forward because I would like for him to set his calendar for this big event that we are hosting for our children.
Is the letter present?
It was present at our last meeting. It was a letter of in, inviting Mr. Smith from the Obama Foundation to come and speak as a keynote speaker to our children in the community. And if anybody got a problem with it, just vote no, how about that? Keep it simple.
So this, this is, so there's a letter to Mr. Smith?
And everybody had one at our last meeting. As I stated, City Manager Watson stated that we really didn't need a resolution.
We don't.
Then call for a question.
Have they agreed to, um, come and, and do the conference here, Commissioner Adams?
I'm sorry?
Have they agreed to? One love.
The Ben, Ben, Benton Harbor is hosting. Benton Harbor. Benton, our Benton Harbor, Michigan. My Brothers Keeper and Girls Equity Network is hosting this year's summit. And we have full support of the rest of the communities in Michigan behind us.
Excellent.
Been moving behind the scenes.
Thank you.
Clearly, that's why I wasn't here at the last meeting. And it is a, a signature for me, so I would like to just get a, inform. But I appreciate the information you provided. Any other comment? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Harrelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Mohammed?
Yes.
Next item is support for presenting the key to the city to the Obama Foundation. Recommendation that Mayor Mohammed of Ben Harbor City Commission support presenting the key to the city to the Obama Foundation.
Discussion. Chair recognizes Commissioner Adams.
Thank you. And I'm hoping that somebody over in Chicago, maybe Obama himself is listening because it would be wonderful if he would surprise our children at this event. We're going to have a whole, whole day of access to not only our Men's Center main stage, but the banquet rooms as well. And we're going to allow our children, the ones that we are going to start listening to and allow to lead their future. A full day of just planning, strategizing for their future. And we're gonna take notes. But I would like this board to present a key to the city to the Obama Foundation for everything that he has done this, just with the inception of My Brothers Keeper in the wake of, first of all, Trayvon Martin and all of those in between up until now. To present Mr. Michael Smith with a key to returning to the foundation on behalf of the city of Ben Harbor. Thank you. Call for a question.
Discussion. Madam Clerk.
This is on the approval of the item, Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Proton's seats?
Yeah.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Mayor Mohammed?
Yes.
Next is resolution, uh, approving the recommendation to award bid to House Levine Associates performing review and update of the city's master plan and zoning ordinance. Uh, recommendation that Mayor Mohammed of Ben Harbor City Commission accept a recommendation of the planning commission to award the bid to House Levine Associates to perform the review and update of the city's master plan and zoning ordinance.
Some motion to adopt motion made by Commissioner Adams. Supported by Commissioner Isom, discussion. Chair recognizes Mayor Proton's seat.
Again, we've been pimped. We've been chastised because we don't see the other bids that came forth. House Levine was not the, the lowest bidder, neither did probably could they do the best job. But because of this planning commission that comes forth that tempts us again and tells us through Abbott Marsh, because Abbott Marsh plays a very phenomenal part on this board. You know, we act like they don't, but they do. Um, how, how did this get handed over just to House Levine? When there was other bids that were much lower and people were willing to do the job? Do we add it like that? That we can, we can spend as much money as we want to and do whatever we want to do? And wasn't it the lowest bidder? Thank you, Honorable Mayor.
Mister Manager.
Mister Mayor, as the, as a member of this committee, I would say that I would defer to the chairperson who was here from the planning commission to explain the process that was handled by them in the subcommittee to get to that point. I was not a part of that subcommittee.
Should we see the bid process, Honorable Mayor?
My name is Lee Reed. I am the chairman of the planning commission. And I'd like to give you a narrative of how we came to the conclusion that we did. First of all, we only saw two bids. One from the Nerth Group and one from House Levine. One was a landscape architecture firm. The other was an urban planner. Landscape architects are usually hired by urban planners to interpret the dream. We meet, we talk. They in turn, okay, we understand what it is you're trying to present. So they'll draw up the dream.
Honorable Mayor, I didn't ask all this. I just asked what was the prices. Was it the highest bidder, lowest bidder? This is not, uh, uh, a night to endorse a subcommittee or planning commission. The question was, was it the highest bidder or was it the lowest bidder? That's it. You don't give everybody the opportunity to speak or to come to this board after we call for a question or vote, something on the agenda. Question was, through the chair, was it the highest or was it the lowest bidder? That's it.
Mister Reed.
This is not a situation where.
Was it the highest or the lowest bidder?
Through the chair.
Mayor Proton. Are you, is everything all right?
That's all I want to know.
But you, you, I don't, the behavior is, 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 is ungovernmental.
Mister, uh, Reed. How many bids were there?
Two.
And what was the other bid? The Nerth.
We went through a process, they gave us two different bids. The first bid was with the proposal. The second bid came after we requested that they present to us the price of what it would cost to do a minimal review.
And what was their bid? What, what, what was, what did they, what were they calling?
It was two stages. They broke it down into two parts. One would be for review of the master plan and the other would be for a review of the ordinances and the zoning. For a review. They gave a cost of sixty-two thousand for the master plan review. For the zoning code and update review, they gave us two options that we could choose from. One was for forty-nine thousand and that would be where they would give us a dedicated person to go through the entire zoning procedures and ordinances and what have you. Then they gave us the second option, which was the targeted zoning revision. In other words, we tell them specifically what it is that we want them to work on. They gave us a not to exceed cost of twenty-five thousand. So if you add the sixty-two and the twenty-five together, you're gonna get a bid that's higher than the thirty-eight thousand. Now, if you read the bids, the proposals, the low bidder is not really the low bidder. He walked in the door and said, if you give me the work product of House Levine, we'll use that as our starting point. After we meet with the commission, planning, folks and what have you, then we will tell you what our no bid cost would be. Because two different things here. Now, if you read what they proposed, if we set up a oversight committee and tell them specifically what we want them to look at, they will review only those items. And they will charge us per hour cost that they outlined. So the numbers that they gave us to me was a red flag. You gave us a lowball offer to get your foot in the door, but you left a contract with no backdoor, which means you could go all the way up the ladder. We had two personal interviews with them where they came before us and we asked them questions for almost two hours. Both of them suffering. They told us, that's the Nerth Group, the thirty-eight thousand, that there would be an additional cost up to fifteen thousand dollars, but they didn't anticipate going over that. But nonetheless, it was not in writing, it was simply in the conversation we had. So we asked them to put it in writing what they were gonna do. So they came back with simply one offer, thirty-eight thousand, that's it for everything, we'll do the whole thing in nine months. If you take a good look at what House Levine offered, these are people with master's degrees in urban planning. These are not landscapers, we're not looking for people to draw us a bunch of pretty pictures. We're looking for people who are gonna tell us how to capture all of these tourist dollars that's floating around, all of these hotels that are being built, all of these plans that I've seen dating far back as two thousand fifteen that we weren't a party of. If we don't plan carefully, once again, they will plan for us as we see them doing now. We must be very careful. We have stars in this community. Skills, talents, ability, and most of all, we got resources. If we don't manage our resources as professionally as we can, once again, we're gonna be left in the dust. As usual, pointing our fingers at other people about stuff we didn't do. Now, Mister Seaton, I respect you.
Um, Mister Reed.
I'm sorry.
You're chairman, so you understand.
I, we spent.
I understand, but he just asked two questions. There was two bids and.
The lowest bidder was House Hill, I mean, I'm sorry, the lowest bidder was Nerth Group, thirty-eight thousand. I don't know how they're gonna do it, but that was how they got their foot in the door.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Commissioner Adams.
I guess my question would be, this is before us. Once again, it's something that the citizens are evidently vying for. And I hope Ben Harbor shows up. I only have one fear. And I have this master plan at home. I keep it out where I go and look at it all the time. And I'm hoping that we're not out of pocket of thirty-eight, almost forty thousand dollars for some, somebody copying and paste. Because there's a bunch of stuff in it that still has not yet been implemented. And we can do our own copying and pasting and get together in a room and strategize and, and plan our own. But if, if, I'm hoping that what I heard you say was something to the effect of this person being so brilliant with a master's degree and whatever kind of degree that they can actually tell us how to capture and monopolize on, I mean strategically on how to get the tourism dollars to come in, I could, a business, open one. I mean, but what we need is for somebody to help us to make opening something possible. Because other than that, we just sitting at a table, book eye and listening and somebody's still planning. I've been around too many tables and I'm watching, still watching, and I'm seeing it right before my very eyes.
Mayor, may I respond?
Well, we didn't call you to become a part of the discussion, it was just a, a specific question that the Mayor Proton.
I had made a presentation which would have given all of this the proper context so they could understand the process.
Thank you.
I see this through the eyes of a realtor. I see opportunities that most people will never see. I see how our town has all the resources that the surrounding communities need. And if we're not very careful how we plan and make our next steps, once again, we will be left in the dust. And I see it happening to us now, it's getting ready to happen again. If we don't plan for ourselves.
Mister Reed, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mister Reed, that's true.
You've done your part, you recommended, you recommended the planning commission, which you're the chair of. You recommended, I understand that.
Honorable Commissioner.
Right.
She put the questions to us and we had to really do some homework to get with her.
She'll have an opportunity to speak.
Okay.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Henry.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, uh, planning commission took a lot of time to look at this project. And, um, my colleagues, we understand, we, we know the inside of everything that's happening to us now. And, um, so I'm saying that RFP was put out for a review. The last time that we did our public, our planning, uh, master plan, House Levine came in and charged us a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And I do believe they came back and did some other adjustments on the master plan, but I'm not sure. But this RFP asked for a review. A review, and they still bid it a hundred fifty thousand. This other company came in out of the clear blue sky, we weren't expecting. Most of us thought House Levine was going to be the only one to apply. But a local came up and said, I can do it. Now, my issue with House Levine, and I asked the question over and over, you've been here before. There's a measure of your success. And I asked this body, how many of you were at the planning master plan meetings? And how many residents did you see? Cause I was there. Now, if House Levine, I'm sorry, you got all these degrees and you, and you're in from Chicago, they didn't do the job. They did not connect with the culture of Bitten Harbor. The people did not come out. As soon as the masters, master plan came out, people started referring to as the master's plan. So there is a measure that House Levine has to have, and it. have, and it wasn't there. So that was one reason why I was not happy with allowing House Levine to step in and do what they've done before, because it wasn't successful those times. This smaller company, now, I did hear, the first time when they said that the other group did not have planning skills. But then when I looked at their, what they presented, they showed me a lot of small communities that they had already did planning and zoning for. So that let me know that it wasn't just landscaping that they did. They actually did some great planning, some got awards. So, uh, another thought was, you pay for what you get. But I won't drive the Cadillac, to, uh, South Bend in a Cadillac when I can ride in a Pinto and be just as comfortable and save myself forty thousand dollars. That forty thousand dollars can be spent on something that's very dear to us, like summer youth program. But, for them to come in and say, they're gonna take small groups of our residents, take their document, they, their data about the master plan, about how they want their city to be, on a Saturday. House Levine will not do that. They're gonna be here from nine to five, Monday to Friday. And every time they leave Chicago, they're gonna charge us a lot of money. These guys are both locals, very close. And when I hear them say, "Well, we'll let House Levine do it and we'll hold their feet to the fire", that's fine. Well, why can't we hold the other group feet to the fire? And save that forty thousand dollars? Everyone knows how I feel about Ever March and how they worked with the city all of these years. So, I just think we need to come back and know that this is not business as usual. There is a time where we're at the corner, let's turn the corner and go down a different lane, because the lane that we've been going down has not been beneficial to us. We paid out hundreds of thousands of dollars and have no accountability from our engineering firm. They don't even use their own bond to make sure that we do things. All right, okay. That's just how everybody knows how I feel about it. But this is not a time to say we're working business as usual. Things are changing for Ben-Haber and we need to change. We should not be looking at paying this outrageous bill. And, another thing, I called the state of Michigan about, if a bid is bid, can it be changed? They said, "No." Our charter says that if there's a bid and none of us want to accept, it has to be rebidded out. Planning Commission recommends. We have to do what's best for the people. And I say that anyone that goes out of their way on a Saturday or even a Sunday and they have all of this other technology to grab our people's information is a good thing. It is not business as usual, guys.
And Lanert is also Whitman and Associates, correct?
Whitman and, and Associate has worked for the city before. When I call, well, she said, "Don't talk about it."
Right, so what's the, what's- Right, what's, I just wanted to, back to the pro tem's question about the two bids, Whitman and Associate is part of the Lanert Group or they're partner. Um, but what's in front of us is adopt resolution approving the recommendation toward the bid to House Levine Associates to perform a review and update the city's master plan and zoning ordinance, which has not been updated, uh, or reviewed since two thousand eleven. So, Chair recognizes that pro tem seats.
I, I defer to Commissioner Adams, you gotta hand it to him.
Thank you, sir.
She said my big hand was on my way.
Respectful, thank you, sir. I, I don't have an understanding, gentlelady, of the third ward as to how we would be saving forty thousand. But my question is, why are we not utilizing and using the wonderful brilliant minds of Andrew?
What's in front of us, Commissioner-
I know, I, and, and I'm just gonna ask him to all for the question, cause there's not one of them that should have been.
Well, since the mayor pro tem was so generous to defer to you, if you don't mind, I would like to recognize him.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Mayor. It's been a rough two weeks with them talking about shutting down the school, so all my passion is on the two-hundred right now, I don't, I don't, not vegetables and all that other stuff. Um, I would say that Whitman and Associate does hire, uh, local minorities, summer jobs, um, even though it is Whitman and Associates. I heard that, I will bet, I did, I did, was a sub. I, I myself, um, know personally that they have put a lot of our locals to school, um, summer programs, they pay for them to go to Ferris State University and a whole lot of other things, um. I'm not suggesting that, that is reason, but if they're forty thousand dollars cheaper and forty thousand dollars means we can fix a papa or a sidewalk or something for our youth, I think that, again, as, I don't, I won't, I don't know if we can find a Pinto around Chicago, but if they did have one, I think if we change the seats out, we can ride comfortably. Um, I just don't agree with just giving them another hundred and fifty thousand dollars to review what they already done for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Thank you for the time, Honorable Mayor.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Singleton.
I'd say one, one concern too is that, uh, with the bidding process, you know, uh, one of the commissioners said it was, uh, somebody was in the house who changed their bid, is that, is that part of the process?
Wow.
I believe it was Whitman.
The com- the committee could not get them to give us a drop-dead number.
Could not get who?
Both. We gave them both the same questions and asked them for additional information. We asked them to give them a not-to-exceed amount. Both of the bidders were asked to submit to us additional information explaining the deliverables. We're gonna do this, this, and this, and this is what it would cost. We will not exceed these amounts. Now, they both agreed that if we were involved and assisted them in doing some of the work, they could lower the number of hours that would be spent. So, with an oversight committee directing them at specifically page by page what it is we want them to review, then they could calculate the exact cost or pretty close to it. So, if both were basically the same cost, we felt that we could still get it in much lower. And the bid was not a hundred and fifty, that was for the master plan review. The other was less. Seventy-two plus twenty-five, you get, that's what the other one was for.
So, House Levine was seventy-two, Whitman was thirty-eight?
Whitman's thirty-eight, okay, the other's about eighty-two, I believe.
Eighty-two, alright.
Now, so-
So, what's before the, uh, this commission, you've had debate, question has been called for by Commissioner Henderson, not a blur.
This is on the actual item. Commissioner Harrelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
No.
So this is on- This is on the actual, uh, item. Commissioner Singleton?
No.
Commissioner Isom?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem seats?
No.
Commissioner Adams?
No.
Commissioner Henderson?
No.
Mayor Mohammed?
No.
Chair, Chair recognizes Commissioner Elson.
I'd like to take my vote to no.
Motion fails.
Chair? Chair? May I make a statement?
And your comments. This brings us to staff comments. Chair recognizes Public Safety Deputy Director.
Uh, for the sake of brevity, we have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Chair recognizes City Attorney Earn.
No comments tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
Chair recognizes the Economic Development Director, Director Jennings.
Good evening, Your Honor. Just wanted to make the body aware of a couple of important dates for the Community and Economic Development Department. We are going to be embarking upon the submission of our fiscal year two thousand nineteen annual action plan and we will be holding a special Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting open to, um, the public for public hearing, June thirteenth. We will have an additional public hearing on July twenty-fourth and we will have a public review period that will span from June twentieth to July twentieth, um, at which time public can review our proposed action plan and give their comments. It is our hope that this body then will take the comments, take our annual action plan and review them and give us the go-ahead, so that we can submit our plan to HUD no later than August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Chair recognizes City Clerk.
Wanted to remind everyone that the Planning Commission is scheduled for tomorrow at five-thirty P.M.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Singleton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Just a couple of things, uh, to be sure. Um, a couple of citizens' concerns, uh, one with the, uh, Fresh Start Garden. And I don't know how that came about, but I heard about that, where they were asked to, uh, pay for some water or change some stuff, you know. I think that's kind of, uh, you know, six years into the, they, uh, you know, their garden had, was a community garden, it was a city event, it was started by, uh, I guess, uh, the, uh, fourth, last emergency manager had some, one of his little deals or something to try to set it up. I can't see where any HUD money would be used for water. We just put the water in, let the water, you know, how much that's gonna cost us, you know, uh, compared to what the garden, you know, mean to, mean to the citizens. Uh, also the persons that's, you know, uh, keeping it, uh, keeping up the gardens, also keep up, you know, that area down, down the street. Uh, and also, I'm saying that, you know, you go squeeze somebody for, you know, a little water and risk losing a, a, a project and being so much to, uh, you know, the community as a whole, especially the people in their neighborhood. And the money we're saving on cutting, you know, uh, not having to cut the lot, you know. As you on the bill list, you know, quite a bit of money for cutting lots. That's one we don't have to cut, you know. Uh, and that's also, you know, we don't have a recreation program, you know, so I think those type of outlets that's, that's out there, you know, they really costing them money, just, just a water. And we got some, uh, kids that's, you know, benefited from it, you know, maybe half families, you know. So, I don't see the big squeeze coming, you know. Trying to get them to, uh, pay for some water and go through all these hoops, you know, just the water's there now. So what, you know. We lose, the water they use, we sure we lose quite more than that with, you know, us and water mains and things, so. Let's, just let that, let that project go. And we asked a minor comment on that, uh, then again on the processes, you know, that we, um, as I was saying before, we gotta tighten it up, as this, this, you know, the stuff do fall to, through the cracks and what it do, we end up in these type of arguments that would look like arguments, but actually it's just debate and, uh, we just gotta, gotta do better.
Thank you, Commissioner Singleton. Commissioner Isom?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, but thank the residents and citizens coming out tonight. Mr. Mike Hoy, I've seen those, uh, pictures, tombstones and all that, it is a disgrace. And I hope they can get that resolved, you know, that is a shame. Mr. Collins, Mr. Collins, about that five G, we need to do research on that, I have gathered a lot of information about that, how harmful it can be.
Yes.
To everything, humans, plants, trees, and so, you know, just because you get faster internet and streaming, but it almost kill you at the same time, so, you know, uh. Ms. Canar, she do a great job in the community, you know, she need water, give her water, you know. She can do a great job with the kids and she had me out there working last, or two years ago, I was out in the prime of something, but she does a great job, she, um, have a pageant board, you know, and we at least can give her a couple thousand gallons of water, whatever it takes to have fresh fruit and vegetables, you know, that's her passion. And Mr. G, I think that was his name from Chicago, Mr. G, G two?
G two.
G two. That was a good inspirational, you know, for kids. It's all about the kids, you know. It's all about the kids, you know, I can imagine what kids go through now, you know, but you know, it takes a village, it takes a family, it gonna take all of us, you know, and, uh, you see what we up front with, with our schools, you know, but God is in control. God is in control. In control, you can have hope. I have hope today that everything gonna be alright. Even with Mr., my neighbor right here, Mr. The grass. You know, I go to work early in the morning and I was going down a river view and the grass about real high and deer jumped out, you know. Grass is up there, it's like, hey, I don't know what they're gonna hay or what, even some lots in the city too, the grass has, uh, you know, my wife start telling me, "Hey, what y'all, you gonna cut the grass?" I said, "I ain't got nothing to do", but I say something, you know. But it is getting kinda high, I don't know how the contractor's missing something, they behind or what, or what's going on, but you know, it's getting kinda tall, you know, things and you know, them big wood chup, they can hide and come at you, you know, stuff like that. You know, plus we want our city to look beautiful, you know. Want our city to look good and cut fresh grass. You know, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and all the comments, just seeing all the faces and smiles, just coming out to support us, that mean that y'all believe in this city, wanna see better. God bless you, God bless Ben-Haber.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, I thank the residents for taking time out of busy schedule to come down and find out how your local government is working for you or not. Grass cutting. It's been a lot of rain and it doesn't help, but if we got more hands, more equipment on hand, it all should be moving. I want to touch base on something, the gentleman, and this isn't the first time I've heard this and I've actually been researching it. And right before I came down here tonight, Anthony, um, there were two couples in different places that was on the news and they were found dead. And it was, it was mysterious for one of them, actually for both. And just catch it on, and just catch it, Google it, or what have you. Just as fast as weekend, something- Just this past weekend, something, I've never had an hearing in my life. And I've never felt such a pain. It's such an aching-like type of pain in my ear. And science was my better subject, I was studying atoms and air and, and that type of thing, I loved that type of stuff. And there's something really wrong, and warning always comes before destruction, remember that. Remember that, warning always comes before destruction. Man has taken jobs of everything that we complain about away from self with their creative minds and the heart and the greed. And, and now we're trying to get it back. But we always create something else that causes another problem. But it's nothing to worry about. Some technology needs to be left alone. And I hope the generation behind me get it. But, uh, it, it can be a good thing as well. Ms. Canard, thank you. I, I couldn't even keep up with you, I tried to start the garden thing, but one thing I heard with my own ears, even before becoming a commissioner, and as I was running, listening to the emergency managers, uh, putting you ambassador over the gardens. And you weren't asking for much. We got this big healthy thing going on across the globe of the earth, of healthy eating. We had some children that get up and don't eat at all. But thanks to somebody like you, with such an heart determination to have a garden feeding people free and making it self-sustainable, and all you're asking for is water. The citizens get money, thousands of dollars, it used to be a million. We just built a pavilion out here for quite a bit of money. And there's no type of plan to make it self-sustainable. But we need to do everything in our power to make sure that you get the water that you need when it don't come from the heavens, to make sure that you got some fresh food over there growing for hungry people. And just know that I got your back in, in that fight, okay? Thank you, and good night.
Chair recognizes City Manager.
No comment.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Harrelson.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Like, thank the citizens for coming out, seeing your government in action on tonight. I'd like to thank Ms. Canard for her hard work, and I'm supportive of giving her some water. She needs the water so she can keep her gardens, and that shouldn't be too hard to do. Also, um, I'd just like to say to the policeman, um, there's a young people going across the street on fair, and they said, "One of your policemen, speed it up." And scared him to death, now, if they, if his brakes had went out, it might have been an accident. So, I'd like for you to talk to them, because that scared the kids to death. They, they was far enough to get across the street, but they speeded up as they got almost across the street. So, maybe they was sending them a message, or maybe they wasn't. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. So many things. Ms. Canard, we don't even have to say anything about you. We already know, you gonna get water. And if you don't, you know what to do, don't you? Okay. I wanna address the five G i- issue. When the young man gave me the document, I was so, li- looked at the document, and me perused it, and then I said, started doing my own research. And one thing that just jumped right out at me, out of the, every community in Michigan, Benton Harbor is the only one listed right now with five G that's already in our city.
Wow.
And I've noticed, the first place that I've noticed was one by the high school and one a block from the high school. Then again, then all the information that is shared about this technology says that it has to be close to each other. And everything in between it is getting radiation. And it's something that we need to put on our agenda.
Yep.
Committee after committee till we all understand that this is something that other communities have been to court about and said, "No, not in my community." So, if it's not business as usual for Benton Harbor, we need to put it back on the, we need to put it on the agenda. And we need to discuss this, beat this, vet it, I mean, find out the truth about it, and I am afraid already for the things that I've read about it, other communities have been to court about it, so. I'd like to see it be put on, on committee, and many times that it takes for us to get a understanding and make a decision about, do we want this technology in our community?
Should do no break.
Um, then I'll say about the, uh, master plan. That we're not going to accept the master plan, uh, recommendation from the Planning Commission, but we definitely need to fulfill this obligation. And I'm suggesting that we move with the lowest bidder. If we don't do that, our charter requires us to open the bid again. And I'll say that the Planning Commission did a yeoman's job of researching this, but they don't have the inside information that we have. So, I'm asking that we accept the Lanyard Group and Whiteman's Group as our official Planning Commission planner. We'll have to go back to Planning Commission meeting?
No.
Okay, alright.
For the record, Commissioner Jones has no comment. Chair recognizes Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, um, I mean, there's been a lot said, and as you can hear, there's a lot of things happening um, within the city and around the city, the school, and just a lot of things happening. Um, so we've all heard those, I don't need to add anything else to what's been said, but I would say choose a, an issue and fight. Now is not the time to hide behind any bush, but to get involved. So, thank you, have a great day.
Chair recognizes Mayor Protonse.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and to my constituents too. Residents for watching, I know, real wide, and to those that are here who are passionately embracing the future. I do apologize again to everybody who came with any intentions of any kind of progress that would happen tonight. I take it on my own shoulders, I thank the mayor for his, uh, addressing state of the schools. Very much needed and necessary for somebody to say something from our government office to let them know, hands off our schools. Hopefully, we don't put our feet, our mouth, and start walking and not just talking. I do think as a body, um, we are moving forward, but we still have a long way to go. Uh, one of the issues that keeps concerning me is I hear residents often times speaking about there's no leak policy. When you have a leak at your house, water's running, like other municipalities, you usually can come in and present your receipt that you fixed the problem, and the problem can only give you a discount on your bill. Also, the yard cutting, um, you know, I've had residents complaining that they got tickets, and our grass is higher than theirs, next rip right next door. And hopefully, we can do something to lessen the burden of how much residents have to pay. Because it's almost like a sneak attack, because if they don't pay it, then all of a sudden, they send them the taxes, and when it goes to the county, it becomes that much more inflated because of penalties and the interest that goes upon that. And then you have elderly people who are trying to adjust to the fact of, can I buy my medicine? Or do I pay two hundred dollars for a grass cutting fee that we're only paying twenty-five dollars a lot for? I do appreciate the fact of serving in this committee on this body. And next year's gonna be a totally new year. We're gonna have brand new places, new places. Hopefully, something will help for the city, residents. Somehow, some way, we gotta lessen the burden on the people. The city residents, we have to somehow find out we are the second highest tax in the state, and one of the highest unemployed. So, I know everything is looking beautiful, wonderful, but those two stats don't match in the urban community. Lastly, I would say that school of choice hurt Benton Harbor more than hurt anybody. Charter schools hurt Benton Harbor more than anybody. And it's no different than what happened in chattel slavery. Well, I don't wanna go there, but it's no different. Because in other areas right now, you got a pistol that was pulled in Lake Shore. Kid did not go to jail, he got suspended for the rest of the year. In St. Joe, they had a text that went out on ABC fifty, ABC fifty-seven that was carried by, uh, ABC fifty-seven, not many news out that's carried it. What a young boy said last year, "Kill all the niggers, eliminate the whole black race." And the prosecutor said, "I don't wanna ruin this future." So, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna give them the further prosecution. But let, let Junior, let Junior say that, and see if he get deferred prosecution. Or let's see if he get something that don't wanna harm this future. So, it's systematic, it's colonized, it's political, racist. And we don't wanna call it that, but that's what it is when it comes to shutting down Benton Harbor area schools. It's because them little black kids, we don't want them to get too much further than what they already had. So, let's call a spade a spade, and the spade is black. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mayor Protonse. I'd like to echo the sentiments, um, my colleagues thanking the residents for coming out. Just to some clarity as far as with Ms. Canard's, uh, or the Fresh Start Garden, uh, which my children have been involved, uh, since you were on Beard Street, and filed you to, uh, make, uh, their hand and fingerprints are on the yellow barn. So, um, you know, I do support, uh, the Fresh Start Garden, I think it's a magnificent work of Ms. Canard. However, um, under HUD, um, and they've really tightened regulations, uh, under, um, Dr. Carson. They've really, uh, looked at things that were done previously under the Obama administration, and they really tried to just undo, uh, everything that was allowed. So, we were contacted, and since the city of Benton Harbor owns that property, they have in communication stated that we should have used general fund dollars to install that water system, as opposed to using the CDG, CDBG, pardon me, and federal dollars, since it is a local garden owned by the city of Benton Harbor. Uh, they've mentioned something to the effect about the fence. They were saying if it's a community garden, then there should, I think, uh, there should always be access, not where it's locked up at any time. But again, you know, this is the federal, and as we, as I stated, under Carson, much has changed. Some have said nitpicking, but it's, 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 so now we're in a process where we may have to pay back the money that was used to install. But with all of that said, just to provide some, some clarity and understanding, and I, and I saw it. So, it's, it's not you personally, but this, these are things that are going on nationally, uh, where HUD now has almost become, and I don't wanna say too much, because we still have to work with HUD, receive funding, but we will bring some resolve to the situation, with or without HUD. But I, I do wanna share that with you, because that's something that you should know.
Yes, I'd like to have some time to take over.
You will, you will receive.
You need some water tomorrow, though.
Um, so also, um, we, we had a great victory, I think, in, in our march toward keeping a high school, despite different views and differences which exist in politics. But one thing that the city council, as well as the school board, and, and, and community at large, Benton Harbor High School is near and dear to all of our hearts. So, tomorrow, I do encourage everyone to go to Benton Harbor High School, the meeting starts at six P.M. And from what I understand, there will be discussion as it relates to the two proposals, um, that have been offered by Governor Whitmer and the Treasury. And also in Lansing next Tuesday, there will be a statewide, uh, press conference and demonstration at the George W. Romney Building, uh, which is one-one-one South Capitol. We do have to go on recess as it relates to a personnel matter. Is there a motion?
Motion to recess.
Madam Clerk?
Supported by our.
Motion made by Commissioner Adams, supported by Commissioner Henderson.
Your Honor, it has to be a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session.
Yes, thank you, sir.
And then the reason has to be stated.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Motion, motion to go into closed session for the city manager.
Evaluation.
Commissioner Eisen?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protonse?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Mohammed?
Yes.
The mayor, the manager has to consent to go in and close session.
Consent, yes, madam. Thank you. Don't go across the hall.